All right, let's get going. Welcome to a special meeting of the council. We're gonna run this in workshop session. So it'll be done informally. It's December 4th, 2017. We have to limit comments to the specific topics. So for anything that's discussed tonight, we have to limit it to the transition or replacement for the city manager and community development director. If there's anything else that they want to talk about, they're gonna have to wait for the next regularly scheduled council meeting. At this point, what I'd like to do is give residents, we have a number of people in attendance, what I'd like to be able to do is give them a very short opportunity to address the council before the council then takes up the discussion, moves through the agenda. Please limit your comments to just the topic in...
I don't see that on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Right, so...
And my understanding is this is a discussion, this is our meeting, you're welcome to listen, and this is a discussion between council.
So I'd like the residents to provide input. The, let's just put it to a vote then. I move that we allow the residents to provide short input to the council before we begin the council discussions. Is there a second?
What's second?
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
No. All right, so no citizen input with that. Mr. Boles, do we have to do anything formally to receive these resignation letters?
Yeah, no. It's something I thought about a minute before the meeting. No, as I understand it, under Lori's contract, and I don't think it's any different with Ben, there is no formal council approval of a resignation. That's a common practice among cities to receive or accept or acknowledge a resignation, but it's not legally required, as I understand it.
All right, well, they've been posted, they've been received. If we don't have to do anything formally, I think we've crossed that off the spot. Council, any argument with that? Hearing none. Let's move to the next one. The first item, under 2A, interim city manager. Lori, you have anything to introduce this, or...
I do, I've got a short PowerPoint that I can walk the council through. What I'd like to do first is talk big picture about how the replacement and transition plan might work, and then we can, so I'll give you the big picture overview, walk through all of it, and then we can walk back and talk through the steps individually, if that's So we do have two positions that are needing to be transitioned and replaced. In terms of a city manager, my recommendation would be that the council be in a position to make an appointment to that interim city manager by December 18th. And as you know, my last day will be December 22nd. Have someone that's in place so that there's not a gap in that position. As the night goes on, we'll talk about the process for selecting that interim city manager and get into some of the specifics of how that might look. The long-term process for city manager, the recommendation would be that the city council engage a search firm and go through a formal recruitment process. You did, included in the packet are two proposals from Hugh Life and David Drownin Associates, two firms that do this sort of work, and they both outlined a process that would take you till about April or May before the city council was ready to make appointment of that position. And because of the length of time, that's why I'm suggesting that it would be important to identify an interim to serve in that position in the short term. You'll recall that this is very similar to the process that we went through in 2014 when the city manager position and community development director were also vacant. In terms of the overall plan for filling the gap with the community development director, we can talk to you about a contract for additional consultant services to be engaged with Poisington Kogler, the firm that did our downtown master plan and is working on our comp plan right now. And we think that between the staff that we have in place now and that additional contract, you would not necessarily need to appoint a person to be the interim community development director, that we would be able to fill that gap with the additional consulting service. And again, the staff picking up some additional responsibilities. I would imagine that that contract would be on either your December 11th or December 18th meeting for approval. The search proposals that were included in the packet also include an element, if you wish to engage the search firm for the community development director, that is a process that was very helpful in 2014. It would allow you to sort of stage those, so you'd go through the city manager recruitment and appointment process, but you wouldn't completely have the lag of waiting for the city manager to come onboard before being able to recruit community development candidates. I would offer that I found it very exciting and helpful that the community development position was not filled until I was appointed. That was a great way for me to begin to get to know the organization and to really start building the team and starting down that path. So I would recommend that you, whether you use a search firm or not, not fill the community development director position until you have that new city manager in place. I don't know if that...
I think from my perspective, again, as Lori said, going through this, both positions in Victoria had previously posted about the same time, so I would've applied about the same time that Lori would've applied, but then there was a long gap. So depending on who's looking to fill this position and is going to apply, I think the further you can just stagger the posting even of the two positions is gonna give a little bit more clarity to anyone that applies to fill my position, so it's not a, almost a six-month wait time before you actually get into the interview process.
Do we have to decide on that piece of it tonight, whether to do them both or to do, I mean, I think there was some, maybe some overlap, that if you did the two items completely independently, might cost more than doing them collectively. But it might be useful to have a little bit of knowledge about, be a little ways down the path with the city manager replacement before maybe making that call. If it's somebody who's not at all around from the area, then it could be almost necessary to have that third party to help do that work.
Yeah, I think as long as the council is comfortable with the transition plan and the contract portion of covering the community development director's responsibilities, I don't see any issue with you delaying that decision.
I'm concerned with delaying it too long. It's such an important position as well as a city manager, and I can understand staggering it a little bit, but to me, it may take quite a while to hire a city manager. I hope that's not the case, but it may take quite a while, and therefore, I'm not so sure waiting a long time to start the process for the community development director is the wisest thing to do. And I would opt to not wait too long to start recruiting for the community development.
So just to identify the elephant in the middle of the room, and Mayor may not be evident to everybody, in a Plan B form of government, the city manager is responsible for hiring and firing all the positions. So that, let's just say that out loud, but that's the sort of awkwardness and timing you've got here, is you would anticipate a new manager to make all decisions, including the city community development director position, but I understand the point about can we wait what may be some period of time for a manager to be named and then have that person need to figure out what to do with that position. So that's the tension, I mean, let's just have that out and acknowledge that's the tension.
You certainly could opt to have the interim city manager run that process if you were concerned about wanting to bring him on long-term or in the shorter term. I just think that's a really great opportunity for your new city manager to be able to build their own team.
Well, take it.
I think there is benefit to delaying the process of bringing in the community development director. I think there's benefit for the new manager to take on some of that role. I think the position we're in this time is a little bit different than last time because we have Erin Smith, when we didn't have an assistant before. So I think that is a big plus, and leaves a lot less of a gap than what we had when you tried.
Absolutely.
Why can't we just give the position to Erin Smith for six months to see if she can grow into a role instead of hiring consultants to do it? And then after six months, if she isn't having issues, or we have a new city manager by then, we can reevaluate at that time. But in the meantime, why not give her the opportunity? And if the workload is too much, we could always find some temporary staff to help support her in that workload. She's already familiar with the process. How long has she been here now?
Almost two years.
So would she, has anybody asked her, is she comfortable with that?
We haven't specifically positioned that as an option, but certainly a discussion. I think she'd be open to having.
Well, I think it saves the city a lot of money. We've got somebody that already knows the role, and if she feels that she's qualified, given the city manager, we can give her the role for six months, that buys us time to find a new city manager, instead gets the job done. Now, if it's a workload issue, we could always find somebody junior to support her on a temporary basis.
And I think what Lori had talked about earlier in supplementing some of the duties that I've had with a consultant is having some services, whether Erin serves in this interim role as you're outlining, or simply just use her to pick up some of the projects that she can lead in her current role and supplement it with a consultant. Either way, you're probably dealing with some consultant that can provide certain types of services, and that it would be up to the city and the staff to identify what those are, whether they're higher-level director-type things, or if it's more of the day-to-day things that Erin manages today.
We used a search firm to hire both of you, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And it took, the interim city manager was in place, what, about a year?
I believe Ed came on in July, and I started in November, and then Ben started in January.
So six months.
So it's about six months.
Six months.
And that's the same timeline that both of the search proposals that are included in the packet contemplate, assuming you get started right away in December.
This is not quite the same environment, though, I must admit. So I would love it to take five or six months, but this is gonna be a tough environment for hiring.
Can I come back? So in the packet, you do have the search firm proposals, both of the contemplate dates of May and June of 2018. There are three firms that generally do this kind of work, so the one that you don't have a proposal from at this point is Springsdade. They did propose last time, and I'm sure that they will be ready to do so again, but with the short notice of the meeting, I just contacted the two firms. There is a little bit of a difference, you know, they're kind of roughly the same amount in price. There is contemplated in the Hugh Life, if you go to, I don't think I actually bookmarked that page, there is an additional step that's contemplated if Hugh Life is the firm that you engage, and that's a pre-engagement session, that they would envision taking place in December. And that would be a time for them to work with the entire council, to talk about the ideal work culture that you want for the city, what your expectations for the new person are, and really to help them determine whether they can be successful in achieving a placement for city manager here. So that would be a difference between the two proposals, and something that if you choose to move forward with Hugh Life, that you'd need to be aware of and committed to.
So I've got a couple of questions about these. When I looked at these, it looks like they've already submitted to an RFP. Did you put out an RFP on this?
I didn't do an RFP, I just reached out to them with, would you like to put in a proposal, you know, the council's meeting on Monday.
Can you give me a sense for the timing for when you did all this? Because until the meeting notice came out, I had no clue that we were doing an RFP or we even talked to the firms.
We didn't do an RFP, I contacted them last Wednesday.
So they just took their what, RFP response template, filled it out, and sent it in?
I'm sure. I mean, this is their business.
So the, last time this occurred, weren't all of the identified candidates from the surrounding area?
At least in the final five that interviewed with me, there was one from out of state and four were local.
And if, if, I understand this correctly, the person from out of state wasn't qualified, but the other four were local, and was it somebody in Shakopee? Run through that real quick. I thought it was Shakopee was first offered, that individual turned it down and refused the offer, is that accurate?
No, that, the individual from Shakopee withdrew before being considered.
Oh, okay, so she was never offered the position?
Correct.
Okay, got it. The, but the other candidates were all from the area, right?
Yes, you had a candidate that had been the city administrator for Minatrista and a candidate that had been the city administrator for Shakopee. I do wanna go back to the thought that one of them was not qualified. One of them certainly may have been determined to not be a good fit, but there was, I can't remember the exact number of applicants, but quite a bit of work was done to get down to that pool of five and determine that everyone was qualified. So I wouldn't wanna characterize them as not qualified.
There were five, four local, and one, I think, from Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Well, we should be looking for the best person we can find. That makes sense, if it makes sense that they're closer, that their background is closer, so be it. But I don't think it should be about, you know, limiting the scope, and I don't think it should be about money.
Look how well Ben's done, he's fine.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if we stretch lines to go Iowa, we can do that once in a lifetime.
Was it a regional, I mean, how far do you know, kind of, first of all, let me thank you for putting, I mean, I know your goal here is to get us on the best foot possible to a successful transition, so, you know, the informal or however you, you know, got this going, thank you for doing that. It gives us, you know, a good framework to understand, kind of refresh, I guess, for you and I, the process and to get us started or understand what needs to get started. So thank you for that. Did, did they have kind of a regional approach? Again, we had Wisconsin and most local, and then again, with Ben, you know, Iowa, so what kind of a range, or where do they go to draw their candidates?
What's typical when you engage a search firm is that they, they do focus on Minnesota, but then they also reach out, and there's always an equivalent of a League of Minnesota Cities, where people in this profession and in government city positions are looking to for job postings. And so they'll usually share that with like the Iowa, whatever their version of the Iowa League of Cities, the Wisconsin League of Cities, reach out to the neighboring states. You can opt to do a national posting on the ICMA website, the International City and County Managers Association. I believe that was done in my case. You just don't typically see a ton of relocation between states, partly because the work that I do, a lot of it is different from state to state, so even when I came back from Illinois or Ben coming from Iowa, the laws tend to be totally different, and so you seem very knowledgeable when you're in Illinois, and then you come and say, well, let's do an impact fee. Oh, well, those aren't legal here. Yeah, let's not do that. And then you have the differences in the retirement system. Minnesota has a salary cap on city managers, so we tend to not draw out-of-state candidates as frequently as you might in other states that don't have that limitation. So occasionally, we'll see out-of-state candidates, but the majority of the searches tend to be local or regional applicants.
What is, what is our, if it's a policy or statute or whatever, that covers relocation and expenses that might be associated with that?
You know, I'm not, I have seen relocation expenses offered as part of a contract negotiation, but I'm not familiar with the statutes that would govern that.
I think that's driven by the market.
Just to take a step back, is it automatically assumed that we have to hire a research firm? Like I said, the last time we did this, we ended up with good qualified candidates, which were close by. And you mentioned the website on the League of Cities, I did go on that myself. It is a nice website as far as for job postings, and if neighboring states have that similar system, that's where people are gonna be going, to looking for job openings. Out of curiosity, does, both of you are headed to Plymouth, did they hire a firm?
No, the city of Plymouth did not use a search firm. Can I answer the first question, or do you have more? Okay, I don't wanna interrupt. A search firm is typically engaged not as much to get visibility on the position, but first of all, to handle the mechanics of receiving applications and scoring them, particularly with the city manager. If you're looking to one of your internal staff to do that, and they're all great and they would do a great job, but that's gonna be their boss, so there's that bit of awkwardness. A lot of what the search firm does, though, is they reach out to passive candidates, and this is not just a problem in my profession or this industry, but I'm sure you're all experiencing it where you work. There are a lot of people that aren't necessarily looking for a new job. So I receive calls from search firms all the time, saying, did you see this posting? Blah, 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 would you be interested in talking about it? And so the search firm, for every candidate that actually applies, they're probably going to be in touch with five or 10 people, they're gonna take them to coffee, the search firm is gonna watch council meetings, come to Victoria, they're gonna be that knowledgeable, really recruiter for the community, and they're gonna be the ones that if somebody has questions about, do you think this is a good fit for me, and do I meet what they're looking for, they will have spent some time with the council and be able to knowledgeably answer those questions. I can't point to any data on this, but I would say it is more typical that you'll see a city post without the assistance of a search firm for a city manager or a city administrator, and they'll end up going through that process multiple times, or they'll draw fewer candidates. A lot of times when you don't use a search firm, particularly for the CAO position, it's because you have an internal candidate, or you sort of already have some idea of who's gonna apply. But you certainly have the ability to move forward without a search firm, you just need to work out who on staff is responsible for running that hiring process for you.
Well, I'm not in favor of spending money on a search firm. I think all of the, everybody knows already that's in this club, if you will, for lack of a better to describe it. So the word's already out there. We can leverage resources in the League of Minnesota Cities and Association of Minnesota Counties. We can post it on the city website, we can post it on these other association websites, and give out a period of time to see what transpires. In the meantime, the, I've been reaching out to other mayors and identifying potential candidates, and I'm sure other council members are leveraging, well, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but maybe they're also looking for potential candidates, at least for the interim position. So before we spend the taxpayers' money, I would prefer that we let this percolate, make the postings on the websites, and see if, see if we get people that wanna come in and talk.
We're talking interim.
This is for the interim, and then let the interim person run something instead of paying 25, I think the last one, what, it cost 25 grand? Do you recall off the top of your head?
The last?
The last search?
I don't. You have the proposal prices.
Very similar price to what's listed here.
Right, so these were what, 18, 20 grand? I can't remember.
They're a little higher than that.
A little higher than that.
The 17 was like 21, 22.
So I would prefer to take that route, just because everybody already knows, and see what transpires over the next 60 days, and then if we've got an interim identified that the council can agree to and bring in in that time, then we can ask that interim manager to do something a little more formal. If it doesn't work, we always have the option, and then at that point, after we've tried this, to revisit the whole thing.
I disagree, for two reasons. First of all, it's gonna be very important that we get a really good interim city manager. As I stated before, we don't know how long that person is gonna be with us. Secondly, it's got, with the situation that we have here, and you all know what I'm talking about, that person has special qualities. Has to be very thick-skinned, besides be knowledgeable and professional, patient, and so on. So we need to find the highest-quality interim manager we can. Maybe we can do that without a search firm, but in terms of finding the actual city manager, I totally disagree. We should use a search firm, keep this totally objective, keep it professional, and to utilize the best science in trying to find the city manager, because we also need the best city manager. So I think this is the wrong time to cut corners. I don't know if we know that much, and I don't know if everybody's gonna come flocking to Victoria to sign up. So I, I, I think we should do whatever is necessary to get the best people, including the interim, because I really believe that interim is gonna be key. We don't wanna lose, we don't wanna slip significantly between Lori and the vital city manager that's hired. And definitely, the search firm, I think, is the way to go, is as far as hiring the city manager. And if we have to go hire the community development director, the same thing. We gain a lot, they're, I think their expertise adds a lot of value, and it's, it costs something.
What about other firms? You mentioned there's a third firm, there's no proposal from them, what about other firms? How do you select the firms for this?
There are three firms that generally do this work, and proposed last time. Springsdade is the third, and certainly could get a proposal from them as well. The prices are all roughly applicable, so these are just the two that I reached out with the short amount of time that we had.
Are there other firms, or is it just those three you're saying?
I'm not really aware, there, I guess, it depends on how far you would want to broaden your search. There is a firm out of Chicago named Gov HR that has done some limited work in this area, and I'm sure if you expanded to other states, there are probably other firms, but these are the three that typically do the search work in Minnesota.
All right, do we know what the cost is, or what you would anticipate the cost being kind of on a monthly contract basis for an interim?
The last contract that you had was for $9,300 a month. In contrast, my current salary is about $9,700, so it's roughly equivalent to what you pay a full-time city manager.
Except it doesn't, your, your $9,700 is salary alone.
Correct.
So we're not paying, but we're not paying benefits, we're not paying social security.
Is that a loaded rate, or just a salary?
It's not a loaded rate, I bet.
Yeah, I can't remember if, that's all gonna be up to the interim candidate, there are some interim candidates that are gonna be very interested in having benefits, be a part of it, and some that would be willing to do it just on a monetary contract basis. That's all negotiated, and there's no standard. It really depends on the candidate you identify.
It all sounds, though, that the $9,300, which was three years ago versus current state for your salary, so maybe it's not the same anymore. I mean...
Sure.
I'd say it deserves that.
So did both of these proposals include locating and getting an interim city manager along with a permanent replacement?
No, neither of these firms include anything regarding an interim city manager. That's something that's usually done internal to the council, because of the quick turnaround that's needed.
And the League of Cities is a source, is it Minnesota?
Yep, can be. The League of Cities maintains a list of individuals that are available to do interim work, and that really would be, in my opinion, the most important thing you could establish tonight. What sort of a process and schedule do you wanna use for getting the interim? It's obviously up to you, but my recommendation would be that you be in a position to appoint that person on December 18th, which is our last regularly scheduled council meeting of this year.
Have you already spoken to somebody?
I have looked at the list that the league has and reached out to a few people. I have three candidates that I can share with you if you're interested. None of them are people that I've worked with personally, so I can't offer a lot of insight. One of them has done work in Victoria previously. I'd be happy to share these with the council. I just need everyone to understand that this information is confidential unless you choose to interview them, but I'd be happy to share those people that have expressed interest at this point, if you'd like.
My assumption is because they have a position someplace, and they don't want their current employer to know they're interviewing?
Or for whatever reason, it's just outlined in the state statute that they're not, their names and information is not public until you choose to interview them.
All right, so explain to me how this would work. If you were to share this information with the council, each of the council members could contact that individual?
That would be fine.
And then collectively as a council, what would we, I don't believe that's something that we're allowed to go to closed session for, to discuss it?
Correct. I would suggest whoever the candidates are, whether they include these three, or we come up with another way of identifying those, that the council tonight set a date to hold interviews for candidates, probably next week, and you hold those interviews and then discuss after that.
And you said these people are potentially interested in filling the interim role?
Yes.
I think we should have a mechanism for contacting these people that's very formal and structured and disciplined, because whoever contacts them should be giving them a specific, you know, script, professional script. professional script, and without any personalizing and any opinionating and that sort of thing. So we need to ensure that that's happening, so that when these people are communicating, they're all under the same assumptions.
Can we record those calls?
Sure you could. I guess...
Obviously, with the tell of a person.
I guess my suggestion would be that you set up a...
You only need one person's consent to record a call.
I'd suggest you set up an interview process, and then everyone just agrees to abide by it.
I think doing that would be really unusual, but that would be... Yes, I don't, if you did that personally, I don't know what the consequence would be for data practices act reasons, and that would not be the norm.
So the council, could we agree to set up a one-on-one interviews with these people? Maybe we can get them to come and spend a half a day at the city hall? And each of us then individually meet with them for, let's say, no more than 30 minutes to kind of get a sense for what they're doing? And then have a formal public interview as a follow-up, assuming there's some agreement to move forward with some of these candidates? Do you want a formal process? Would that work?
Just a question. Is it required that the interview process be public? I presume it wouldn't. That's a legal question.
So previous processes, we've had the group come in, and then in a rotating schedule, meet individually with council members one-on-one, until everyone has met, and then we get back together as a group and discuss it in public.
Did we follow that process for the interim? Because I think that's, we're talking the interim right now, aren't we?
Trying to remember who we interviewed for the interim.
I know there were two candidates presented to the council, but they weren't identified.
Actually, we did, because I remember, was the gentleman from Trista, was he with the final group, or was he with the interim?
I used the final group.
Yeah.
Okay, and I don't recall.
The staff report alludes to two candidates being considered, but it didn't identify who they were. I don't recall. Yes, but that's something that if you wanted to set a date and bring folks in and interview one-on-one, and then have some sort of a discussion in front of the council, or a panel interview, that's something that would be appropriate.
So if the council's in agreement, we set these up, we do round robin, where every council member gets to meet with them individual one-on-one for, say, no more than 30 minutes. After that process has been completed, we hold a public interview with probably, I don't know, whatever the council wants, 15 minutes, since we've already met with them once, to do a public review. And at that point, make a decision after those, after that public interview.
So that's not what I heard. I guess I heard that that, the process that I described, it was for the final candidate, and that we used a different process for him. And if we're going to bring him in, sit down and have...
Running time is of the essence, to your point, right?
Have it in the local council.
If these candidates are interim, from this group that you have, are any interested in full-time?
I believe two of the three would potentially be interested in a full-time position.
If they're interested in full-time, I think there is benefit to meeting individual.
There is benefit in that.
No, well... But would we want to give them that sort of advantage of pre-interviewing for the final interview, if we're going to have a bigger pool for the permanent position?
It wasn't done before.
Well, I take back what I said, because I really think it has to go through the process of a head under, of a professional. It has to be a professional evaluation before we even come to any conclusions of who should be really considered seriously.
For the interim also?
No, for, we're talking about the fact that it's possible that interim would evolve into the final.
So that did happen last time, and Mr. Shukel went through the final process, just like everybody else.
Right, he should. He or she should go through the process.
And I wouldn't think we would want to sort of shortcut that final process with some sort of a bigger interview in the beginning, you know, that is for people who express an interest in it as a permanent position. I think they get the same treatment as everyone else.
I mean, there are really two goals here. Goal number one is just to keep the ship afloat. Goal number two is to find the right person. And so keeping the ship afloat, there may be difference in skill sets. But, you know, number one is, they've got to be a leader for the people here. They've got to be able to work well with the team. And they have to have the experience of running the city our size. And so with that background, I don't think this is a drawn-out process. It's find someone that fits those two criteria so that we can get on with finding the right person for the permanent position, which may or may not be the individual that's here. And I would approach it from the standpoint that the person that is here from an interim basis, it's really their choice if they want to be interviewed for that, but we're not guaranteeing that.
No, absolutely. But I think they're just bringing people on board. I think that the goal tonight would be to make a decision on how we do the interim process. I don't think there's any rush to jumping into hiring a firm to handle the final process.
I disagree. I think we're already behind the schedule.
I disagree too. I think we've got to move.
Right, but the proposals we have are for the permanent position, right? So that's a distinct and separate issue from the interim position. I would like to see us go do that round robin interview one time, so everybody gets to meet these interim candidates, so that we can execute on that quickly. And then examine the full-time replacement through the war, what I saw, what I hear the council saying through a formalized process. But if you don't want to have a follow-up 15-minute interview, which is what I took from their comments, then fine, we just do the one round robin, and we have an open meeting where the council discusses the pluses and minuses of the candidates, solely focused only on the interim position. We make a decision so that we can get that individual in as soon as possible. And then once they're on board, then we can look at the proposal for a more methodical, longer-term process using a consultant for a permanent replacement.
I disagree. I think we should have...
Well, then how do we get the interim person in and talk to them?
No, no, no. What I disagree with is delaying on the consultant at this point in time. I think we should pick them both tonight and go.
I agree.
All right, so the...
If we, if it's possible, but we shouldn't wait a long time to pick the...
I'm not saying that we have to. I hear the council saying they want to do both, but there's two separate processes here. The permanent is the proposals that we have in front of us. The other process is this round robin to get the interim in on the short-term basis.
Exactly.
Can we get, I would like to see the third proposal, Stedman or whatever that is.
Springstead?
Springstead, thank you. Would be, I just, you know, as we go through the process, you don't know what might fall out, or availability, things of that nature. So I'd like to have all three irons in the fire.
So what I, can I see if there's a consensus on the council to do this? We do the round robin, focus solely on the interim replacement with the candidates that Miss Hocken is going to send out to us. After that round robin, we discuss that in open session, make the decision at that point for the interim. And then we wait on the proposals until we get this third proposal back, which I'm assuming we could have in time by the next council meeting?
I think so.
So that's what, the 11?
We'll talk a couple of days.
Right, and then on the 11, with the third proposal in hand, even though I'm against the proposal, it sounds like there's a majority here with the council that wants it. But we select that firm on, at the meeting on the 11, when we have this third proposal in front of us.
I would like to enhance, have the proposals enhanced. Could you go back to the two that I've already provided them, and make sure the third one is aware of this? I would like whoever we decide to bring on as consultants, I would like them to conduct exit interviews with both of you. And I would like to make that a standard practice on the poll.
For key positions, agreed.
So one other thing, the, I would like to see these proposals changed to just the city manager position and not the community development position, because instead, I would like to see us give Erin Smith a shot, assuming she's interested and comfortable with it, before we go and hire somebody to recruit for that position.
I disagree. It has nothing to do with Erin. More wanting to understand why, there's a reason why that wasn't suggested, and we need to understand that.
I think that there should be discussion. My personal feeling is that I've viewed community development directors since 2003. The best one we've ever had is sitting right here. So we need to come up with that same skill set. And Ms. Smith is a great person, a great employee, but she may not be the one to take it. We should be not lowering our standards. Because the team of Lori and Ben, and all their other great people, they did a great job, did a wonderful job. So I don't think we should lower our standards.
I don't think it's lowering the standards by giving Erin an opportunity to be a...
I just like, I'm not saying anything about, this is not about Erin.
I think you're talking about the process, standard process.
Standard process, and search for some excellence here.
I wouldn't be opposed to looking at this in the same light as the city manager, where she's given the interim position, go through the process, allow her to interview for the permanent replacement. I mean, I think that gives, I mean, it gives her the opportunity to see and work in that role, and us the view of that, as well as having a broader search pool that gives us the best outcome.
But going back to the beginning of our discussion, there is a lot of benefit to getting the city manager in place and on board, getting settled in, and then working with whoever, the new development, community development.
I don't think anybody's disputing that.
Yeah, so I don't, I think there is two separate things here. We could hire a firm to bring the manager on board, and then let them decide if we need to do another search firm.
I would plan on, start upfront with expectations that we're going to go through whatever the process is and follow through. My preference is to go through both, that we plan on doing both the manager and the community development director. We stagger them from an implementation standpoint. And whatever the contract is that we have with the consultant, if we decide that, no, we get the city manager on board, and we think Erin's the right person, or someone else is the right person, we have the option to not go forward with it. But set it up at least upfront, so that you have the option to do so.
I don't think we want to be starting from square zero if we get six months down the road and decide we need to...
But have that as part of the option of the proposal, have that option to do it or not do it. If we commit to doing it, then we're tying the new city manager.
Well, and that's what I just said. I'm not committing to do it. I want to have the resource there and ready to go, and then we can make a decision if it's the right thing to do or not.
So like a Chinese man, you have it in the proposal. We execute on the city manager role, but we hold off on executing on the community development director, at least in the short term, but then pull the trigger if we want to at a later point?
Correct.
Both of the proposals you have in the packet are set up that way. They're already separated out to show a city manager search only, or both.
All right, do we need motions and votes on this?
I have a couple more questions about the interim. I think the direction you've given is fine. I don't need a motion and a vote. But are there other candidates that any of you are intending should be interviewed for interim? Should I look for a couple more? What's the ideal number that you'd like to interview? And could we, when would we set a date? Is that something that you'd all be prepared to look at candidates tonight? I don't know. That's just how far I got so far.
Well, I mean, what's your, maybe we should hear about the candidates that you have so far in terms of at least, you know, a profile, but, but yeah. So how many more could you get? And, you know, time is of the essence. So for me, it's, you know, if we've got good people that are interested, maybe that's enough.
And then coming back to the two points earlier, if it's, they're a fit with the team, and they've got the skill set and experience, do, from your perspective, do those three have that?
You know, I've not personally worked with any of them. So certainly the resumes that they've provided and the brief conversations I've had with them, they have very relevant experience, and at first blush, they seem like they would be a good fit. But I've not worked with any of them to be able to really say that I have a feeling for which would be best.
So I think a point in this process, Mr. Funk, what you described in terms of round robin with us and stuff like that, I do believe there needs to be a step in addition to that when they interview with staff, so I would input from staff.
Right, I wouldn't disagree with that either. The, can we agree to see if we can expand that pool from three to, let's say, five, maybe even six? Given the short timeline, I don't think that's possible.
But without impacting the timeline.
Right, right.
Would notifying the league to put it on their website, would that help?
To put the interim position?
Or is that, or there's not time?
Yeah, I guess I probably wouldn't hurt anything. I just don't know. And would you like me to determine who those five or six are, I guess is...
I think, feel free to use the connections you have and the resources you have, the league or the Association of Minnesota Counties. And if they have somebody that they can put you in contact with, fine. If any of the council members know somebody, I think they should submit the name to Lori, and Lori can do a quick phone call with them. I mean, we don't want to get 12 people here, but if we can get up to five people, maybe six people, I think that's manageable. But to Councilman Striggle's point of view, we don't want to push that timeline.
And an important consideration will be making sure that the three you've got now, the two more, or four more, or whatever that you can add, are comfortable with their names becoming public. Because as I understand the process being laid out, whether it's individual with each council member or with the council collectively, the names would be public under the Data Practices Act at that point. So they've got to be comfortable with that. You'll want to confirm that with the three, and then if any added.
In the event that that narrows the pool unacceptably for us, what process, or how far can we go while respecting that confidentiality?
Well, I guess my reading of the statutory language is that if you meet formally individually, albeit not in open session, individually as council members, that is a point at which you've decided that this is the pool of folks we're going to interview individually, and their names are public.
I don't think you should expect that your pool will be unnecessarily limited. I mean, it's an important point that we need to make to the candidates and make sure they're comfortable with it. But typically, if folks looking to do interim work are in between full-time positions, or they're retired, or they do it on a consulting basis.
So it should be...
So I think that part should be okay.
But the permanent replacement will be more sensitive.
The permanent replacement is much more sensitive.
And look, it's worth saying it out loud, I think you said this, Lori, but one of the big benefits of a search firm, if that's what you like to do, is that they manage the, is it public or not? Is it subject to the practices or not? What's the appropriate way to do process-wise the interviewing and the collecting of final candidates?
Typically with a search firm, when you get down to that, those final steps, they're going to present you 10 to 12 candidates, and they're going to be identified by number instead of name and city. And they're going to be described in terms of experience and skill set. And then you're going to narrow it down to that, you know, four to six candidates that you want to bring in for an interview. And at that point, those candidates have the opportunity to say, yes, I'm comfortable, and I'd like to come for the interview, or, and I really want my current city council to find out about this. I'm going to withdraw.
And that was probably the biggest benefit of having a consultant help us out last time, was the process. And yes, it did take an extended amount of time, but it probably would have taken four months longer had we not had that help. And going through the process with the consultant, and, I mean, they have scoring mechanisms already set up. They have ways to help us come to a decision much more rapidly. These are the things that you need to look at from a criteria standpoint. They've done this before. It's a big help.
It becomes much more objective than sort of emotional, subjective with that very disciplined process. I completely agree.
Is the council...
Discipline, yes.
Are you able to look at calendars together now? Or do you want to give me availability for your weeknights next week, tomorrow? Do you want to send me an email? We'll need to post notice and reach out to people, so...
Get back here early tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great. So yeah, let me know, you know, tonight, early tomorrow, mid tomorrow, which weeknights you're available next week. We obviously already have a council meeting on Monday, so we'd look at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Probably not Friday. Probably can't get any of the candidates to come in on Friday.
Saturday morning.
I would say normally people are open to that, and if, put that on your list of availability. But weekends in December are so precious to people, you guys included, I'm sure. I think that might be a challenge. But definitely include it on your availability if it's the only thing we can make work.
All right, unless the council has any other comments, I think we've covered all of the items in two. Lori, is there anything we've missed here?
No, the only thing would be going back to that contract with HKGI. We've met with them to talk about, we do... We've met with them to talk about, we do obviously have some large projects, including the comp plan. Ben's going to give a bit of an update on the comp plan at the end of the meeting. But you will see that contract with HKGI for a little bit more expanded scope come back. And whatever role Aaron Smith would play or not play, I think that will still be essential in terms of workload.
I'd also say, because we haven't yet, that in terms of my duties and the interim and even thinking about this contract with Hoyt and Kogler, there's a lot of people besides Aaron that will and have expressed the willingness to step up and take up some of the slack during the interim position. So, it's not like we're necessarily saying Hoyt and Kogler comes in as however many people are involved to take all of the responsibilities I have. It was already somewhat assumed internal to the staff that there's going to be some things better done by Kara or Ann or Andrew, Scott, Aaron, who, I mean, whoever those people are, there's going to be somewhat of a ripple effect where people are just taking on some level of responsibilities as more managing things that are ongoing already today. There's more of the question and the need to have someone like a Hoyt and Kogler in place for if more work comes in beyond what we're already managing with on a day-to-day, it's another set of hands that isn't at the table already to help pick up the slack, so to speak.
Right, but if, if the council decides to go through, forward with the contract, there's only one contract option listed here, don't we need to have additional options to choose from?
Not for professional services. And I really think, just from a practical standpoint, Hoyt and Kogler is already engaged on the comp plan. We did go through an RFP process for that. The amount of time and additional cost to involve another planning consultants at this point would, I think, be detrimental to the city.
So, you're comfortable that we've got a good value for the dollar?
I am, yeah. And we, we know the rate sheets of pretty much every firm out there. And if someone was getting out of line, we do enough projects that I think we know about that.
So, you're telling me that their rates are competitive?
Yes. Right, and I, I'm not just telling you that. That's been demonstrated through the RFP processes we've gone through recently.
So, the council will have to take that up in our next meeting on the 11th?
Yeah, either the 11th or the 18th. I'm not sure what schedule, but before the end of the year, we'll get that taken care of.
All right, anything else in section two here?
So, we agreed that one week from today, we're going to have all the proposals for evaluation?
Yeah, assuming that Springstead can meet that timeline, I will plan to bring back the search firm proposals on the December 11th.
And then when would we meet again to discuss the proposals?
That would be on the 11th, the next council meeting.
So, it'd be an agenda item for the 11th to select a firm at that time?
That would be my understanding.
So, we have the proposals a few days before so that we take the decision at the council meeting?
And so, ideally, they'd be part of the packet Thursday night.
Yeah, and I have not reached out to Springstead at all. So, presumably, they can meet that timeline.
I mean, do we want to say we go ahead with it without them? But we try to get them?
Do we, do, do we lose anything if we give them a couple more weeks to the next council meeting? Given that we're, we're taking action on the interim manager to give them time to respond?
You know, I can schedule it as an item. And if we don't get Springstead between now and then, you guys can take it up then. These, they are usually good about turning things around. So, we probably don't need to discuss a what-if that probably won't come up.
All right, anything else in section two, council, Lori?
I have direction on everything that we need.
All right, number three, Lori?
Yeah, so I just wanted, I thought it was worth reiterating that the way our government is set up with the city manager form of government that follows the council communication goes through the city manager, you're on a good path and schedule to getting an interim city manager. And I think that's probably the most important thing in terms of maintaining sort of that flow of information that we've had. One of the things that happens when city managers leave is that it does create sort of uncertainty and sometimes angst with the staff. It's very difficult for people to get separate work direction from five different people, which is part of the value of the city manager form of government. Again, if you get an interim in place fairly quickly, I, I think that that issue is very much mitigated. The other thing I'd say is my advice that I've given to the staff, whether they would choose to take it or not. But normally, as you each ask questions of me or of any member of the team, we're sort of using our discernment about, is this really a question that you just have an interest in and the rest of the council is probably not interested or thinking about it? Because we do try not to take up more of your time than we have to. My advice to everyone would be in the interim while the, or in the time between now and then, before the interim is onboard, if you guys are asking questions of them, just provide that information to the whole council. Rather than trying to use that discernment, just share everything with each member of the council and that'll help you all know what's going on with this in the city. And keep the staff out of any trying to decide, am I getting different direction? What should I be doing? Just really be open about that communication.
Wait a second, I don't think I follow what you're saying there. You're saying the council members should send something out to all the other council members?
No, I'm definitely not saying that. That would be terrible advice. No, so let's say that you call Kara and you ask a question.
Kara would then send something?
Kara would send something to the council saying, I received a question and here's the answer. And four of the five of you might say, I don't care about this. But it will eliminate the staff needing to feel like they're put in the middle of discussions or they don't know who to share everything with. My advice would be just overshare in terms of questions coming from the council so that they don't have to try to navigate that.
I, I would think that should be the policy all the time anyways. If a council member doesn't care, that's fine. But if a council member has comments, then they can respond back to the individual. And I would suggest, as the process, put the council as a BCC. So, if somebody hits reply all by mistake, the rest of the council doesn't see it. We don't want to create unintended, unintended consequences. So, it's very simple when you just BCC the whole council and everybody will know the rest of the council got it. And then if somebody by accident does hit reply all, doesn't go to all the other council members and cause issues with the whole number.
Right, and since we had that inadvertent reply, that's what I started doing.
Yeah, I, I think we can test that. I thought if it was BCCed and you hit, I would never do it intentionally. I don't think anybody would. But if you reply all, it doesn't go to the BCC list.
You also can't see the BCC list.
You can't see who got it.
Right, but we can make the assumption based on, if we're talking about this, this is the way it's going to work. You can make the assumption that the staff has sent it to the rest of the council members.
I guess I think if you hit reply all, it goes even to BCC members. But we should test that and make sure.
Sure.
All right, so let's, let's do a test of that and find out.
I think, you know, assuming that we are successful in having an interim manager appointed before your end day, I think the standard process is you are the hub and that should be independent of everything else. That should remain that way. And if, you know, if need be, if we need to make a statement to the staff to support them in saying you are not required to, you know, take direct, that it should go through the city manager, however you want to phrase it. But make sure that they understand that even in this period of transition, the roles of the roles.
I think that's pretty helpful.
Okay, council, any other comments on this item? All right, questions? Cancel the strategic planning session? The, I think we should at least delay that until we've got the interim city manager hired and then repost the question at that point. I think we've got so much stuff going on that if, even if we, we are set for January, planning for January, by the time we get somebody new in, they're going to have so much going on. I think we need to give them at least a little bit of time. And I don't think delaying this 30, 60 days is going to have any material impact.
I think we have a new strategic plan. Let's replace these two people. That's the plan right now.
I think we should delay it 30 days or whatever, not too long, and make it a one-year plan instead of a two-year plan. So, we focus, focus tightly on the next year, but don't delay the process too long. Because we, as council members, need to get this in our head, what we're really trying to do in the next 12 months. And we can't wait three, four months to decide what we're going to do this year. We need to get it in our head. What, what are we really going to go after?
I guess I agree with you. My concern is, is that this may take more than three or four months.
I understand, but of the council itself, we need to, if we're focusing on a year, I want to know what I, what, everybody agrees is the most important thing.
Lori, from your perspective, are there time-sensitive gaps in, in our strategic plan where, yes, obviously, it would be ideal, but it would be much better to have the new staff on hand to participate? But again, depending on what that timeline, how that plays out, do you see any gaps where we kind of say, delay up to X and then you've got to go with or without?
I did think this through and I can see both. It was really great for me to have one of the first things that we all did as a team, you know, once Ben came onboard. And a great way to get to know the council and the community going through the strategic plan and the focus groups. That's such a great way to start your team-building efforts. On the other hand, I could also see the value of having the council go through that process and putting together a one-year plan, that bringing in the new staff and for the team that's already here to know, because we've got a lot of stuff on the horizon. I mean, it's just, it's, there's a lot going on, really exciting stuff. And your time is limited, staff time is limited. So, I could see the value in the council still going through the process and doing a one-year plan, that that would really give clarity to what are we trying to accomplish? You know, our, our research is probably a little bit more limited than they were. Many of the things we identified in that 2015 plan have been achieved. You know, what, with what you have in the next year, where do you want to spend your resources? So, I'm sort of torn between recommending that you wait because it's such a great team-building opportunity and saying go ahead because you really do need a roadmap for what you're going to do right now. And that's probably not helpful.
So, I heard, I could agree with the council member vote. The, can we get a consensus on the council to have a strategic planning session in the first half of February, which is a short delay, but not excessive? And then we focus on 28, what we're going to do for 2018?
I'd say, the only way out, I'm sure if you want to do it, I'm concerned it's going to be a waste of time. It really depends upon progress that we have with the interim manager and the final, final candidate. If we're not making progress there, that has to be the number one focus and that is the strategic plan. So, if you want to put it in February, great. But we have an ability to reassess that based upon progress.
Yeah, we can always adjust if we need to. But at least for planning purposes, plan for the first half of February with an interim city manager. And then if the council decides it's not worth the time and effort because of issues finding, finding the temporary or interim manager, we can always reschedule.
I agree.
Will we have consensus then to do that?
Typically, we've, we've engaged a consultant for that work. So, I think one of the things to be cognizant of is if you're going to book a date from a consultant, be obligated to a contract, if you feel like you'll be ready to do that. And that, that's kind of why it's on here too, is because we do have a consultant engaged for this work. And I don't want them to miss out on other work that they could be getting. And I don't want the city to be responsible for any charges for something we're not going to go forward with.
So, can't we just put a clause in there that, that says it's possible to be delayed and the city's not going to be, suffer some sort of a financial penalty if we have a delay? I know that's maybe inconvenient, but this kind of thing happens. The object, the intent isn't to do that. But we're dealing with some unique circumstances here and we have to be able to have some flexibility.
Maybe we can negotiate like a cancellation fee or something. At the beginning of the year is always a very busy time for the folks that do this work. I'll, I'll have the conversation and see what they're really doing.
Are we already facing a cancellation?
I don't think so. At this point, I don't think so. I think if you go till, you know, January 15th, then that cancels.
Counsel, any other comments on 4A? No, we have a consensus then? Okay, Lori, the citizen survey?
Yeah, so typically, the city is, is planning to do the citizen survey. We participate in the National Citizen Survey, which is used by about 500 communities nationwide. And to do that on an every-third-year rotation, that's a mailed survey that has a statistically, scientifically sound statistical sampling. And we were on track to complete that again this spring. It's not mandatory, but the survey really recommends that you try to complete that at the same time each year. Especially in Minnesota, we experience some mood fluctuations throughout the year. And really, to accurately compare your results to your previous results, it's nice to do that at the same time of the year. So, I put in a timeline, who has the? Oh, I can do it here, never mind. Looking for the escape button. I put in the survey here. If I remember right, the surveys are mailed in April and you get results in May. There's no way I can read that.
What's the staff, can we look between now and then if we go forward with this?
The biggest part of the National Citizen Survey really is in developing those optional questions. So, we included three closed-ended questions and we've typically elected one open-ended question. So, the most time commitment from the staff is really in working with the council to develop those questions. Otherwise, there's a little bit of work in liaisoning with the National Citizen Survey, but they do all the mailing, the tabulating. It's not very staff intense.
So, my preference would be to go forward with this. I think it's important, especially given the circumstances, if staff can manage it.
I would agree, what's the cost?
It comes out to about 15, 17,000 total.
Budgeted 15,000.
And this is mailed to every household in Victoria?
No, it's a statistical sample. I believe it's 1,200 homes. You can expand that survey size, but with the, with the sample that's included in the base price, you get a plus or minus 4% margin of error usually.
What kind of return rates do we get?
We are typically in the high 40s. Anything above, I think it's 35, is considered good and we're usually well above that.
And that's considered, considered statistically relevant then?
Correct.
I think they try and get demographic as well as geographic distributions correct?
They do, yep. We give them precinct maps and things like that.
Or budget?
Is there any element of the survey questions that reflects on city staff and, and that could be impacted by the transition?
There are a lot of service-level questions, but I don't know that they would be impacted by the transition. And there are a lot of specific questions about snowblowing and, you know, litter pickup and police services. But they're all things that I don't think should be impacted.
From a budget standpoint, we are facing 25, 30, 35,000 for a search firm. Is there benefit to delaying this? Because, because of those extra costs from, I don't know, where is this money going to come from for the search firms?
From the budget?
Well, we will have some offsetting expenses. One of the things we could consider is, at year-end, we typically are underspent for the year in our expenditures. So, we could look at setting aside some assigned fund balance to cover, to cover these expenses.
Can you, can you bring a proposal next Monday with funds you would propose, have fund balance available that we understand that could cover that?
Oh, I mean, we have the revenue stabilization fund and we're way over this year for permits. So, I think there's an easy obvious source.
There's cash available for us. All right, how many questions do we get? My assumption is there's a standard block of X My assumption is there's a standard block of X and then we get, what, 10 specific to our community?
It's a smaller number than that. I believe it's three close-ended questions, so where you can say, you know, A, B, C, D. And then there's one open-ended question that is an additional cost, but we've elected to do in the past, where you can design the question and then folks can write in their answer.
Do we tend to get a lot of people that actually take the time to write?
We do. Mm-hmm.
All right. It sounds like there's a consensus to move forward. Counsel, any other comments on this?
So there is about $1,000 price savings if you commit to doing this in 2017. So if I'm hearing that, yes, you're on board with that, I'll let them know that we want to go ahead and lock that in so that you can realize the price savings.
Yes, good.
So we need to vote on that in the next council meeting, make it official?
I don't, I don't think so, but I'll look into it.
We already budgeted for it, right? So it's.
Yeah.
So can we go forward based on the, kind of the nods from tonight?
I think so.
All right, so that works. Last item. It seems to me that we delay hiring this person until we've got some indication as far as whether we have an interim manager and then what's going to happen in a permanent replacement. I don't think we should move forward with that because there's too much else in flux.
If I could just maybe give my thoughts behind it and then you guys could discuss it. We had, we had previously had a person that filled the HR role, as you'll recall, and then when I came on board, that person left in 2015 at some point. And when we evaluated our staff needs, we decided that what we really needed to do was fill the planner position that had been eliminated during the downturn. And so that was what we did. Obviously, we brought on the senior planner, Erin Smith, and looking at the skillset we had between Kelly and I, determined that we would be able to absorb that HR function for a while. You know, you'll recall that I was the HR person director, whatever, as part of my assistant city manager responsibilities in Chanhasan, so I had some of that background. Kelly had the ability to manage the benefit side and help with other things. So we sort of had the capacity to do that. Some candidates that you'll get for city manager may have an HR background and some may not. We'd envisioned hiring this position in April. Originally, we had asked for it in January and just the way the budget usually works out, we're looking for places to cut along the way. And so we pushed it out to April. So the other portion, you've got the HR and hiring portion, and then we're looking for someone that would be responsible for communications. Right now, we manage our website and our social media pages through sort of a conglomeration of efforts. One of the reasons that I'm asking if you want to go forward with hiring this a little bit sooner is because the staff is already going to be absorbing a bunch of other duties between the vacancies and Ben and my position. And particularly on that communications front, most of what you see published on the homepage of the website, the news flashes, most of that has been directly my responsibility. It's not always typical for a city manager, but that's something that I've been able to do. I have run our Twitter account and then it's a shared responsibility for our Facebook account. But if you follow us on social media, you'll know that we've been pretty active. We're posting on Facebook probably four or five times a day. We're tweeting just about every day. Those are things that we can just sort of let go by the wayside for a while, you know, they're not part of our core duties. But this council had always had a priority to make sure we got, we have communications on the forefront. If we went ahead and posted this position, I would see posting it sometime this month, accepting applications through about Christmas, and then having the, probably the finance director run a hiring process with the interim city manager, you'd probably be looking at bringing somebody on in February instead of April. I think it's not a make or break if you want to do it, but I certainly wanted to throw it out as a way to make sure that things don't get dropped in the interim and to make sure that there's not too much stress on your existing staff.
I can prefer to go forward. I mean, accelerated timely?
I agree.
Council member struggle?
Yeah, I'm torn between that and allowing the new city manager to hire their own staff, but I think given all of the other challenges, I think get support moving forward and letting down, getting that, getting that position filled in the February timeframe.
Just curious, Lori, who was the person that was in the position that left a while ago?
Jessica Bydick. She went to the city of Corcoran.
Okay.
She took that supervisory position.
Is this person going to have enough direction with just an interim? Or do you see yourself as being a supervisor on that role, Kelly, as far as for this new person?
I would imagine they would be reporting to the interim city manager. That's not something we've talked about, but.
Is that what you would assume?
Yeah, but I, Kelly actually will be very helpful in providing work direction, you know, and that's kind of.
Yeah, permanent organizational structure-wise, you would consider that position part of the city manager staff, director of law?
I would. Yeah.
As a part of posting this, you have a job description and duties and that's all written up and.
It's not yet.
But it will.
It's in the head.
Well, I'd like to see this delayed, but if three council members want to move forward, that's enough. Council member Gregory, any other comments on that?
None, but again, I think bringing up, getting the new manager on board is our priority. If they had time to pick their own staff, whether it's community development director or hiring this communications specialist, I prefer to hold off on this. I think we have a number, number of things on the, on the, on the docket right now.
I mean, I kind of agree with you. I do want to move forward with this more rapidly, but if we get an interim city manager, it just becomes a burden. Good.
I worry about the workload on the staff with this change. You know, that's the worst thing that can happen now is we go through the next six months and everybody else has just snowed and that will not help the city at all. I say stay ahead of the curve, make sure you have enough people to do the job well.
I do, I do think we should put a caveat in there that says that there has to be an interim city manager on-boarded in the timeline that we have in mind, and for whatever reason, that would get backed up, then I think, yeah, this gets pushed out along with it. I don't think that timeline can hold if that first piece isn't in place.
But if we go ahead with what the majority of the council wants to do is start that process now, before we'd ever hire somebody, we don't know whether or not we have the interim manager. If we have an issue with finding an interim manager, then we can always revisit this and delay. But at least, starting the process at least gets candidates identified in the pipeline.
Yeah, if you're not obligated to hire just because you've posted the position.
All right, in that sense, I think that's probably not a, not a bad thing to start the process and see what happens with the interim manager. Counsel, any additional questions, comments? Lori, is there anything else you need?
Nope, I think that's good direction on everything.
All right. If there's nothing further, then I move we end the workshop. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Can we walk through the comp plan really quick?
Sure.
Can we, wait a second, that's not?
Yeah, I guess I was a little worried that this got out here.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda. Special meeting, I don't think we can discuss that, Bob.
Yeah, I guess, to do what?
The only thing was just to update on status of it related to my role of coming to a conclusion and having people in place. Is it more timely?
Oh, so it's related to your transition out there?
Yeah.
And how we're going to handle that?
Yep.
Oh, okay, and that, we should have had that on the agenda. Bob, is there any issue if we discuss that now?
It's, we have these dates.
Yeah, if it's confined to talking about Ben's position, I guess I think that's part of what we're here for, but if it's talking about the comp plan.
It's not details about the comp plan, no, just what role I have and what I've been trying to do since May, the announcement of my resignation, I'm getting things still in line so that I can proceed forward on the timeline that it's been. That's the only part that I really wanted to share.
Very much transition plan.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So one of the key tasks that I have going on is the comprehensive plan. I met today with our consultant and Kara to just talk through kind of a status, make sure everyone's on the same page of where we are today, what's left to be done. Got some key dates put up on the slide there. Obviously, where we are today is we've gone out for public comment and we've had an open house about kind of some concepts on potential changes that could be made from what we had in 2030 plan. Based on that feedback, our goal is in January to come back to the public with a preferred plan based upon all that feedback we've received. So we're setting a date again with the joint group that had previously met, the city council, planning commission, and park and recreation committee, to meet at the end of January, get an update on what that preferred plan looks like, if there's any additional direction the council or anyone else in those two committees has. Revisions could be made with the intent that the following week, there would be an open house for the public to reintroduce the preferred plan, get comments on that. Obviously, with the way that we've been trending, so part of what we did today in talking with the consultant is, we are on track with where we've been in terms of getting a draft plan put together come April. These dates really allow that plan and that process to stay in place. The consultant is in budget, has capacity to assist as they need to in some of the additional meetings and facilitating kind of the process, so to speak. Instead of the key point person in staff being myself in this interim thing, it would move to Kara, primarily because of where we also are in the process of creating the plan. A lot of the work moving forward is going to be more engineering-related than specific to planning, once we have that preferred direction plan in place. So those were the big things that I at least wanted to make sure you all were aware of. Because it's such a big project, we don't want to let kind of the momentum drop off.
So what I heard you say is that Kara's going to step in for you in this process for the next couple of months?
In terms of overseeing where we are and getting work done to stay on this timeline, she'll be the local person, kind of making sure the consultant is living up to the schedule that we put in place. We're on pace right now, so it's not like it's something where she's, needs more effort to pick up the slack, so to speak. But it's fairly typical, we have a consultant helping with any planning effort, that there's someone with kind of a local presence to be able to manage the timeline and also as things come up on the day-to-day that might influence what goes into the plan or what might impact a meeting, Kara can kind of give some feedback to that consultant on what to be prepared for.
So that's fairly important, right? Given the final deadline for.
Correct. So the final deadline, we have to have a, a plan that has gone for multi-jurisdictional review, so every one of our neighbors plus other government agencies has to review the plan. They've got a six-month window. We really don't want to deviate from what the current course of action is of getting a draft plan in place come April, because we need that multi-jurisdictional review to be done and completed in September so we can still submit to Met Council before the end of the year.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't Erin just take over this process forward?
Erin, Erin will be heavily involved in reviewing content and providing kind of the more local planning background, but in terms of overseeing a contract, she hasn't done that before and Kara's already involved in that process to begin with. So in terms of just where some communication is already residing within the staff that's here, it seemed more natural that Kara would pick up that.
And we're picking up, so up until this point, the engineering role has been a little bit quieter because the land use plans have been underway, but now that we're getting to the point of preferred direction, my team starts ramping up to work on laying out sewer, laying out water, finalizing local transportation work. We have a consultant on board helping with that. So it, naturally, my role starts increasing at this point regardless of Ben leaving.
All right, counsel, comments, questions?
I didn't realize, I guess I had forgotten what type the schedule is and that you have to have the multi-jurisdictional things done quickly. And the final plan goes to the council before the end of the year.
Correct. So the council will have the ability to review a final draft before it's sent out for multi-jurisdictional review. There'll be a check-in once that time period is ended as well, before it then gets sent off to Met Council. Met Council basically gives their blessing and then the council formally adopts that final document after that.
The wild card occurs if the Met Council requires a change, but it gets sense for that.
Yeah, the nice part of this go-around from what the city would have gone through in 2030 is we can send drafts, they have an online app, submittal process where we can send draft chapters in to get reviewed, get feedback, and we can be far ahead of the curve, so that doesn't happen. But as an example, to Bob's point, the city went through the process of sending out for Met Council to review in 2008, didn't get a final approval through them until I believe it was the first part of January. So we, as a community, end up adopting our 2030 plan in 2009 instead of 2008, but we still met the Met Council deadline, deadlines of submitting.
All right. So it sounds like, counsel, unless there's any objections or additional comments, Kara will fill in for Ben in driving this process forward to hit the dates. Any objections or counsel in agreement?
Sounds like a plan.
Gentlemen? All right, I think you have a consensus. Is there anything else?
I want to look at, is there anything else that we talked about needing direction on?
Nope. All right, I move we adjourn the workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify the same, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
You're very fast. Is that on your table?
Uh, it's just dressed. The coffee cup's not mine.